Have that golf tournament. Turn out.
Oh, me, I never organize another thing in my life.
Sure. Famous last words.
Turned out fine. I stacked my team and still lost. Like came in last long.
Madam Clerk, is it ready? It's nine o'clock. We'll call the meeting of the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners to order. We'll also be meeting at 9:15 as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization. Both meetings following the Open Meetings Act, a copy of which is posted at the entry of the room. First order of business is to open with prayer. Would you join me, please? Our dear heavenly Father, we just thank you for the many blessings that we have here in this country and around this table. I ask that you be with those less fortunate than ourselves. I would ask that you give us the wisdom to have a good debate today and a bit of your knowledge and the outcomes of those debates. We would ask especially, Father, that you protect those who serve both locally and abroad to protect these many freedoms that we enjoy and be with the first responders that are out there every day protecting our freedoms as well. We pray these things in your holy name. Amen. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting held on June 24, 2024.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve those minutes regarding the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners meeting held on June 24, 2024.
Second.
Motion and second. Roll call, please.
Okay. Any discussion on that?
There is no... Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Absolutely, please. Thank you.
So, the minutes as written are correct for what was said in the meeting, but I need to correct the record or correct the understanding of something. When we talked about our committee structure last week, there was discussion on the ad hoc committee for the infrastructure project. And I incorrectly stated last week that it was myself and Commissioner Wiens as the county board representatives on that committee. But instead, to correct everybody's understanding of that, it's myself, Commissioner Hugley, Judy Clark, Jason Schultz, and Gary Pearson were on that committee. So...
On the committee for what, Chris?
The potential infrastructure project where we submitted the RACE grant. It's correct as written. I just wanted to make sure that there was clear understanding because I think...
I'm not clear that I understand. Okay. So, I know that I was contacted, I think, by you after the first... I'm going to call it transportation meeting. I don't know. It was held outside of here, somewhere. I don't even know where it was held. And out of that meeting, which who was in attendance from the board at that meeting?
At that meeting, it was Commissioner Wiens and myself at that meeting.
Okay. And what committee was that?
There was no meeting. We brought it to the board. This board talked about it. And there was authorization given to go ahead and have that stakeholders' meeting. We came back from that meeting. We had discussion, and it was decided... Commissioner Woodruff at the time was chair. This board discussed and reported it to the ad hoc committee. And at that point, it was you, me, and we worked with Samantha Redfern on the RACE grant application and everything else.
Exactly. So, was that appointed here or something? I don't even recall that. Okay. All right. Then I stand corrected.
For the very first meeting, though, that was convened by West Central, Commissioner Brunz, that was... Originally, it was you and Commissioner Wiens.
Which is where my confusion came in on the discussion last week. I just wanted to make sure that...
And that committee was never discussed in this room. But before the transportation convening out at Mid Plains Community College.
It was discussed because it came... We got an email from West Central. There was wires crossed with communication with me and Amber Cuskey, who's not here, can't defend herself, but it was poor communication on probably more some my part with her not clarifying my intent, that I wanted to talk to this board first to put a stakeholders' meeting together. And Amber's an amazing individual. Go get her. And she ran with it and sent out an email prior to the meeting. But we had the meeting. I immediately called you and said that was sent out too early. And we discussed it. And Commissioner Wiens, we got the board discussion and we had board authorization to convene that stakeholders.
But I mean, for you and Commissioner Wiens to be the two convening the meeting, that was not discussed
No, I asked at that first meeting.
Until after the letter went out.
Correct. Yes.
Okay. Just for clarification.
Is everybody clear? I'm not sure I am, but I think we need to go on. So, okay, with that noted, any other comments or questions?
So, are we saying that moving forward, the commissioner representatives on that project will be you and Commissioner Hugley?
That's how it's stood for several months, yes.
So, that's how it currently is now. Okay. Thank you. Other comments? Roll call vote, please.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Wiens?
Aye.
Luler?
Aye.
Brunz?
Aye.
Hugley?
Aye.
Next item is to consider claims and treasure receipts as presented. We had those in our packets. I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes regarding... Oh, sorry. That we approve the claims and treasures receipts as presented.
Second. A motion and a second to discussion. Roll call vote, Tammy, please.
Luler?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Wiens?
Aye.
Brunz?
Aye.
Hugley?
Aye.
Next item is to authorize the chairman to sign the quarterly excise tax return from PCORI fees related to the Affordable Care Act. What does PCORI stand for? Anybody know?
According to the document.
Patient Center Outcome Research Institute.
There you go.
It's an annual thing. It was when the Affordable Care Act was goes in, this place goes towards research.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
We need that... You still looking for that motion, sir?
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we authorize you to sign the quarterly federal excise tax return for PCORI fees related to the Affordable Care Act. Looks like that's in the amount of $447. Is that correct?
Yes.
Wait a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, Tammy.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Wiens?
Aye.
Luler?
Aye.
Brunz?
Aye.
Hugley?
Aye.
Mr. David, first.
Yes.
Next item is to receive and order filed the fee report submitted by the county sheriff.
Make a motion that we receive and order filed the fee report submitted by the county sheriff.
Second. Motion and second, discussion. Roll call vote.
Brunz?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Wiens?
Aye.
Luler?
Aye.
Hugley?
Aye.
Next item is authorizing the chairman to sign the FOP Lodge 26 Health Insurance Letter of Understanding.
That's for the last one. Thank you.
We want to move on to the next item. I'd like to have a motion so we could discuss it.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion authorizing you to sign the FOP Lodge number 26 Health Insurance Letter of Understanding.
Second. I'm prepared to stay here all day, guys. I've got nothing but...
I second this.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Thank you.
I spoke quietly. I'm sorry.
No, thank you. That's...
That's good, because I do have...
I was going to say, thank you, Ken.
That's fine.
Discussion.
So, am I understanding correctly that they're taking parts of what we've enriched with our benefits and not others that are costing the county a little bit more money? Is that correct?
That's how it looks to me.
Chairman can weigh in, but essentially, because of the confusion, we wanted to engage those folks in good faith. And Tyler reached out and thanked you to Tyler. And so, the in lieu of was an issue. They were very, I think, very cordial and accommodating to step back and appreciate the fact that we weren't intending to impact their contract, which they know we can't.
That was clearly stated multiple times in our meetings.
Well, but apparently, there was plenty of confusion on this side of the street to convolute that. At any rate, I thought they were very gracious to engage with us in a positive way. And so, and Commissioner Hugley can weigh in, but the issue of the in lieu of was part of the discussion. And it was our opinion that that was a minor adjustment before we negotiate the entire package next year when the contract comes for renewal. And so, I'll let the chairman weigh in from there.
I recall exactly as you do. Tyler, is anything that I'm remembering not correct?
I suspect the FOP may approach the county toward the end of the year when we do our other open enrollment, let the rest of the county employees on. They may have some interest at that point. I think they're staying on their current plan may be fairly temporary, but that's up to them.
I hope so, because if we increase the cash in lieu to help with the new plan. So, I mean, both of these... We'll just see how the negotiations go toward the end of the year. I would welcome your input on that.
So, I guess I'm... I mean, the $500 increase cash in lieu is a good thing
It's a good thing.
For the employees, right? And they... So, they're accepting that part of it, but they're not accepting...
They're staying on a plan that costs the county more money.
So, the single plan where we increased the deductible for county employees to $1,000, they are keeping a lower deductible?
That plan was never involved in this health care change. Never. Right. The FOP is a separate entity. We made the changes for...
That I understand.
So, they have every right to stay on the old plan, but they're taking parts of the changes that we made to the rest of the employees and not taking the other aspects, I think, which is fine. That's part of the negotiations. I just hope that when we have negotiations next, they take the entire package.
Keep in mind, they were misled that they could engage this new plan. And a lot of them filled paperwork out that was useless.
How were... Who misled them?
A number of folks, apparently, including our insurance people from NACO. So...
I guess I was unaware of any of that.
If you want to get into all the details, we can do that.
No, I'm not wanting to.
But the bottom line is that that contract was never to be touched until it's up for renewal. Period. So, all the chatter from this side of the street was inaccurate.
Okay.
I would like to say I do see where Commissioner Brunz is coming from, where they're taking part of it, but not all of it. That is noticeable.
So, we'll see how negotiations go later on.
Any other discussion?
Do we know how many people are going to take the extra $100 in cash in lieu?
I do not.
I do not.
I have no idea.
So, we have a motion and a second, as I understand. We can discuss any other discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Luler?
Aye.
Wiens?
Aye.
Brunz?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Hugley?
Aye. Thank you for understanding. It was a rather awkward moment for Commissioner Wiens and myself. There was a true and misunderstanding. Not blaming anybody. It's nobody's fault, but it happened. So, we did the best that we could do under the circumstance of having a negotiation coming up. Thank you.
Next item is authorizing the chairman to sign the engagement letter with McChesney, Martin, Sagehorn for the 2024-2025 budget services.
I make a motion that we authorize the chairman to sign the engagement letter with McChisney, Martin, Sagehorn for 2024-2025 budget services.
Second. Discussion.
Is that fee in mind with what they've been charging us?
Considering inflation, I believe that's a more than fair increase. Thank you, Becky.
Thank you, Becky. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Brunz?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Luler?
Aye.
Wiens?
Aye.
Hugley?
Aye.
Next one is authorizing the chairman to sign the memorandum of understanding with the North Flat Public Schools for the superintendent's duties and services. You might recall, once the county went away from having a county superintendent and decided to contract that at a far, far, far less cost on those limited duties, the North Flat Public Schools offered to step up and do that for a minimal fee. And that's what this is, as we've done in the past.
Can we pay that out of tobacco, liquor licenses, state fines, county court fines, and licenses, district court fines, and county court forfeitures?
I don't know. That's what it says. I honestly don't know.
We paid it out of the general fund.
I was just asking. I don't recall. I wasn't on the board when that happened, so...
Yeah, it was like 2006. I have some of the records, but the administration recorded the mark of...
It's a longstanding thing.
Is this an annual thing?
Yes. We've supposed to have had annual agreements. One of those has kind of slipped through the cracks, but now this is unending. It's like until we terminate it, I believe.
You have to have somebody under statute recognize this as a county superintendent. It would be my motion to authorize the chairman to sign the memorandum of understanding of North Flat Public Schools for superintendent duties and services.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Wiens?
Aye.
Luler?
Aye.
Brunz?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Hugley?
Aye.
Next item authorizing the chairman to sign Pay Application Number 10 for the Sutherland-North Bridge Project. Good morning, sir.
Morning, Jason Schultz, Lincoln County Highway Superintendent.
Morning, Jason.
Morning, sir.
I don't think I do either.
Let me read the amounts, okay? The contract amount originally was $5,240,489. There's no change orders at all at this time, so that's zero. So, the current contract price remains at $5,240,489. Of that total completed and stored to date is $4,282,069.89. There's a retainage, a 5% retainage of $214,103.49. So, total completed and stored to date less retainage is $4,67,966.40. Previously, they'd been paid $3,666,142.63, leaving a net on this application for payment of $401,823.77 as of 6/20/24.
Correct.
Jason, go ahead. How's things going out that way in Europe?
Pretty good. They're actually getting scheduled to get the concrete paving done out there, which I think they're... So, they're start moving in not this week, but next week.
So, concrete paving?
Yes.
So, that's... Is that still going to be a no-cost change?
Yes.
The contract?
Yep. And that was something that they had done. I checked into that a little bit more. And they had done early on in the contract, so we do have everything that we're good there, so...
Good. I like that.
Yeah.
That's fantastic.
It was a huge benefit to the project for them to do that.
Are they putting a concrete plant up there?
No. No.
So, getting that scheduled. Any idea on when?
They said they were going to start moving in there next week. So, I don't know if they'll have any paving going down next week or not, or if they'll just be in there setting up and setting string lines, getting ready to pave.
Regardless, I love it.
Incredible.
Yep. They're coming along nicely. It looks wonderful over there. If you guys haven't been over there, it might be worth a detour to check it out.
It's beautiful bridge right now. So, the concrete approach work needs done. They need to seal the bridge.
Could I get a motion to approve the payout? Then we'll continue discussion.
Sure. I make a motion that we authorize the chairman to sign Pay Application Number 10 for the Sutherland-North Bridge Project.
Second. Please continue.
They need to do the concrete approach work. What else do they need to do? They need to seal the bridge, some shoulder work, some riprap and striping, or is there anything else?
Guardrails. There's some landscaping, trees. So, there is still quite a bit of work to be finished up, but I don't think there's anything major item-wise.
While I was out there looking at the bridge this late last week, I had numerous residents of the county driving over the bridge. They were skirting the barriers. Just want to make... Get your opinion and have discussion on this. It's still a construction site, correct?
Correct.
It's not a safe environment for people to be driving over that bridge?
Correct.
Okay.
It's a little bit of a concern.
It is a concern.
Hopefully, that doesn't happen when we're trying to do the concrete road.
And I'll bring that up with the contractor as well, that we talked about that. We've seen that, so...
Commissioner Brunz, was that happening while contractors were on-site working? It was... There was no one there to stop them?
No employees were there to stop it from the contractors. I stopped them.
Yeah. Thank you. Because that's not safe. It's not healthy for the project if it's too soon to be driven on structurally or for the finish of the platform before it's sealed. But my concern is also for the people that are... But my, my concern is also for the people that are taking that chance.
I have this, probably sounds pretty cold, concern for the people taking the chance. They don't know what a barricade means, and to not go around it, that's, you know, it's terrible. Things happen bad, but, you know, we have to be responsible for our own actions, so. And you're right, once the concrete going, keeps going down, hopefully they're stopped back far enough that contractor maybe will have somebody there to make sure that doesn't happen. So, thank you for bringing that to our attention, Commissioner. Other comments or questions?
I was attached the emails, Jason, I'm sorry, I missed it.
Oh, okay.
Maybe I didn't attach that or something.
No other discussion? Roll call vote.
Burns.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye.
Hubley.
Thanks, Jason.
Depending on the severity, they might have to stick up a cable or something, a padlock, you know, who knows? Unfortunately.
How many more payouts are left on the project?
Uh, well, I guess I don't know. It just depends on their progress and how long it goes out from here, so.
Hopefully, only a couple.
Hopefully.
I would think that we're winding it down.
I mean, contractually, they have until June of next year.
Yeah. Oh, I think they're gonna beat that deadline all the way.
Please stay right there, please. Next item is to authorize the chairman to sign the right-of-way app. It should be a probably application submitted by Charter of Communications.
Yep, so this is a permit to occupy right-of-way for a bore going in under Buffalo, which is just out south of State Farm, right before you go up the hill to Indian Hills there. So, road's elevated there, so it's gonna be well below the roadway and.
Entertain a motion, then we'll have some discussion on that.
Authorize the chairman to sign the right-of-way submitted, right-of-way permit submitted by Charter of Communications.
Second. I spoke with Jason regarding our concerns about the mapping and stuff that we had on our past ones, and I'm glad to say that you affirm that you're making it clear that that's part of the requirements that will need to be met. So, thank you for doing that, Jason. Other concerns or questions, comments? Roll call.
This, I do have a question. This is just for taking internet service to one resident there?
Looks like that's what it is, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know what it looks like. It's not part of the big.
No.
Install.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Other discussion? Roll call vote.
Williams.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Hubley.
Aye.
Thank you.
I don't remember ever being caught this late on a Board of Equalization. That's great, we had some discussion. It is 9:28. We will recess as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners convenes. The Lincoln County Board of Equalization, again, following the Open Meetings Act is amended and a copy of which is posted at the entry of the room. Items, first item is to approve the minutes regarding the County Board of Equalization meeting held June 24, 2024.
It would be my motion to approve those minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting we held June 24th, 2024.
Second.
Any questions or discussions? Roll call vote.
Williams.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hubley.
Aye. Certificates of correction and refund is submitted by the county assessor. I see none, is it correct? Okay. Any other items come before the Board of Equalization? We will adjourn as Lincoln County Board of Equalization at 9:29 and reconvene as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners, again, still following the Open Meetings Act, as previously commented on. It's 9:30. Next item is to discuss, consider application by Jerry and Tammy Welsh for Welsh Administrative Subdivision located at 25547 West North River Road in an A1 agricultural district on property described as attractive land in the southeast quarter of Section 35 Township 15 North, range 33 west of the 6 p.m., Lincoln County, Nebraska. Good morning, young lady. Would you identify yourself?
Yeah, good morning. Judy Clark, Lincoln County Planning Administrator. You guys should have all received a copy of the review comments. Attached to that is a preliminary and final subdivision. Attached to that is kind of a location map, so you get an idea of where the property is at. The subdivision is requesting to split a 3.16 acre agricultural home site from a 52.43 acre property. Planning staff has no objection to the subdivision. The subdivision is in conformance with the Lincoln County Comprehensive Plan and zoning regulations. I will try and answer any questions, if you have any.
What are the closest intersecting roads, Judy?
Um, so, it is, uh, my map doesn't show that for you, does it? So, they are on.
Judy, can I interrupt?
Yep.
Pardon me. It would be my motion to approve the application by Jerry and Tammy Welsh for Welsh Administrative Subdivision located at 25547 West North River Road in an A1 agricultural district on property described as attractive land in the southeast quarter of Section 35 Township 15 North, range 33 west of the 6 p.m., Lincoln County, Nebraska.
Second.
Thank you, Chairman, I mean, thank you, Chancellor. Chairman doesn't have to consider him being a son of a gun, do you? Appreciate it. Please continue.
So it's on North River Road, and then I cannot see what that road is that runs north and south.
With that, the Crane View?
I think it's further west.
Way further west than that.
If I can maybe look at that map.
Almost to Hershey.
It's equidistant between Sutherland and Hershey, actually.
Yeah, I think if I could look at that map, I might be able to tell you. It's gonna be closer to right in this area. I was way off, yeah. It's like right in this area. Yeah, I was. You know, it's like about right in there. Right in there. I was way off.
Yep. All right, thank you.
Yep.
Judy, I noticed when I was looking at this weekend, help me out. What, what are the blue lines? Is that some kind of a?
I don't know. That comes up, that comes up on the GIS map. I don't know what the heck that is.
Thank you. You're, the square was pretty blurred in there, because that was straight line, so.
Yeah, I have no idea. That comes up on, I couldn't get it to go off of that map. So it's the red, it's the red portion. It's kind of a squirrely lot, the 52 acres. What their intent is, is to keep the home site, and then they're selling the rest of that property to their abutting neighbor.
Is that, that's agriculture ground?
Yes, yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions, comments? I'll just make a comment. I remember 15 years ago, 20 years ago, I mean, I lose time, but, you know, we did the 10-acre thing, and that was prior to that, and the planning commission started seeing fit to break them down smaller on individual request, and still doing that, so. I will go with the wisdom of the planning commissioner, several good members on there that study the issues and look at them, and just leave it at that. Thank you. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Williams.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hubley.
Aye.
Thanks, Judy.
Thank you.
Okay. Since I've got myself totally messed up here, there should be an agenda that has a next item somewhere. I'll bet if I can just manage to find it in my totally unorganized manner here.
Not until 9:45.
Okay. I bought some time to look for it, is that correct? Thank you. No, no, I've got it.
You got it?
Yeah. I had two different piles separated out in sort of a matter of importance in my mind, and.
Well, you're collecting yourself if you want to handle.
Oh, thank you.
Claims over. Yeah, we get rid of a little bit of other pile.
Thank you.
Apparently, there's no 19 or 20.
Um, I thought I saw 19.
19's over there.
But I don't know that I got to 20.
I have 18 to 21, but I didn't see 8. Or 94.
I'll let you know if I stumble across it. Oh, there's 20 right here.
Okay. Let's wait a little longer. I don't know where the closest plant is. Maybe it's in the past.
[coughs] She's got my. I can make sure. Yes.
That's Makayla's.
I can sign it too, Joe. Or you can sign it for me. Thank you, Chris.
Yeah, put a little sticky note on it, Joe, thank you.
Yeah, I'll have Kent sign his before it gets that.
I can sign it if you'd like.
Before Joe does.
Before Joe does. This one will come signed twice.
It's 9:45. Our next item is to discuss, consider authorizing the chairman to sign the 2024-2025 Community Connections State Grant Award in Special Conditions. Good morning, ma'am.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Jana.
Good morning.
My thumb through the page. Oh.
Jason and Brian, have you noticed a little difference in the temperature in that shop?
A little bit. Hard to tell with this weather we stop here, but I think there is time to really see a few days.
They're really keeping things off a bit once nights. I don't have that hanging down and stuff anymore. I'm sure that air conditioning is much better.
And it had to improve the lighting in the shop for the mechanics to have that reflecting down on them. I stopped by last week and looked at it. It looks great.
What are the mice going to be in or something? They don't like them.
The mice had to relocate.
Oh, okay.
Probably across the street.
The next one will go further east than you.
Hush.
Might be one way to get over that thing. I had a haze. There's a guy.
Who's that?
That hazen sprinkler there.
Oh. As in lawn sprinklers? I wouldn't know. We don't have that technology at my house.
You mean you never water your lawn?
I don't know. I get my steps in and exercise by dragging hoses or other stuff.
Well, why am you? I just, he checks our hoses or something like that.
You're so full of it.
Well, don't have a comeback for that.
That's on my maybe someday list.
10 o'clock. Next item is to discuss, consider accepting donation of a walk-up pod from UNL. Before we start any discussion, I'm going to ask for a motion and so we can put this on and have a good discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we discuss and consider accepting donation of a walk-up pod from UNL.
I will second that. I, before you start, Michaela, I'm going to read something. I don't think you have this. Okay? It's from the sheriff.
Okay.
All right. Because I got it this morning, so.
Okay.
There will be a discussion this morning about the free pod from the university. Judging by the picture, it appears to be an eight-by-twenty structure. It has a four-by-four cutouts, one on each corner of the walk-up. If that is the case, the enclosed portion is eight-by-12 with one door and four windows. If my assumption is correct on the size, we would have 96 square feet of storage. That may not be a great benefit to the Lincoln County Sheriff's Office. Possibly Lieutenant Newton will have a plan for it to be useful before today's 10 o'clock meeting, albeit a funeral. I won't mention who it's for, and it's assigned by the sheriff. We've not heard from the lieutenant. I was told if we had something here to tell us. Please, Michaela Wulwer, you brought this information earlier?
I did.
Okay.
So, last week, I was contacted by Emergency Management Director Brandon Myers with a question if the county would have any use for a pod. From the University of Nebraska, Lincoln was given this pod from NEMA to use during COVID for testing or vaccinations or whatever. They no longer have a use for the pod and are giving it away. They are also willing to pay for transport, loading, unloading, setup. So basically, it's a free pod. Like I did earlier this year when we had discussions about a different set of pods, I reached out to Rhodes, the sheriff's office, Building and Grounds, the entities that I serve on committees for, to see if we had any use for the pod. The sheriff expressed some interest in at least exploring the possibility. Beyond that, that's why we're having this conversation today, was to see if there is any use. And maybe the conversation shouldn't just stop with Building and Grounds and the sheriff's office and Rhodes, potentially our extension office, our fairgrounds, the Wild West Arena. I see a lot of potential in this pod having a useful purpose here in Lincoln County. Maybe even the city can be brought into the conversation. I did explore that with Brandon, and he said where he is the entity that would have to receive the pod on behalf of Lincoln County, and then he could transfer it if that so be the direction we decide to go. So, that's all I got.
I've had the pleasure of looking at the pod. Very, very good-looking, attractive unit.
Very sturdy little building, yes.
I think what originally might have brought this up also is there was, we received a letter from the City of North Platte wanting to remove a pod that was given during the COVID time that had a drive-in garage on either side, which the sheriff had a great tilt of interest in, would be great for storing vehicles and evidence storage that may have been involved in a crime. And so, what started as a discussion to receive that piece of property, and I was not there personally, I understand that our legal counsel, Mr. Volkmer, was there. Were you there, Michaela?
Yep. Building and Grounds, both Commissioner Woodruff and myself were there.
And that also brought up item number 10 that I asked to have put on the agenda because it related to that. So although unfortunately, we were not able to receive what really would have been of great interest to the county sheriff, Commissioner Wulwer, I think, rightfully so, said there's something that we may benefit from. Do we want to discuss receiving it? That's where we're at. A little bit of discussion.
I don't know anybody that has interest in it, but if they do have, I think we should pursue it, but.
Where would you put it?
Well, that's part of the discussion. First, we need to find a useful purpose for it. There's no sense in receiving free stuff if we're just going to store it and not use it. So.
Sounds a lot like my wife.
Yes. Did I say useful or useless? No, I'm sorry. I just feel like this is a conversation that needs to happen in this room and to see if we're even interested in having Brandon. You know, we all know how busy Brandon is, and he would be the key communicator. He did say that it won't sit there for long. The offer went out to him first, and if we don't respond in a favorable manner, then the university wants it gone. They have no use for it. So, I feel like if the county-supported entities, which the extension, the fairgrounds, they are county-supported entities. So I feel like since it was offered to the county, we should explore county options first. And if there's no use there, I say we reach out to the city and to the school. I know the school has a food pantry that they do out in a parking lot. There might be some interest there. I just hate to see us decline this offer without giving it some thought and consideration.
Would it make any sense at all is, when I speak with the media, and the media can also put this down right now, that there's a possibility that Lincoln County may be able to receive this pod. I believe you have a picture of it?
I do.
That you might be able to share with the press?
I can.
And table this for a week to see if we get some response back that we could forward on to Brandon to follow up on, and we could discuss it next week whether we receive it. If there's no interest in other groups, I'm sort of like, you know, if we don't need it, let's not get it. But that's just one person's opinion.
I would also ask that that information get relayed to the rest of the commissioners. That we can have discussions with our relevant committees?
Oh, yeah. Absolutely.
And we'll reach out.
I'll send it to Tammy, and Tammy can send it out to all of you.
Good point. Super.
I do have a suggestion, but since Commissioner Brunson serves on the West Central Health Board, Chris, if you're open to it, I'll have a conversation with you after the meeting. I have an idea that might be agreeable to two different departments. So, that's all I got.
I'm reading between the lines.
Okay.
I'm probably wrong. Anything further on this discussion? There's a motion and a second, and would it?
For tabling it?
That's just, that's going to be my point at all.
Which was your suggestion?
Pardon me?
Which, I mean, you suggested.
Right. So I think that at this point, we'll table this, continue this on next week's meeting. Okay. Boy, I got one minute.
Good morning, Dykes.
Maybe if I just stared at that clock, it might move a little faster, but it doesn't seem to be moving.
Watched pot.
Maybe if you look at it, it'll move a little quicker, huh? I'm not having much luck. Thank you very much, Michaela. It's 10:10. The next item is to discuss, consider appointing committee to the Nebraska International Port of the Plains. At last week's meeting, I believe it was a motion that the Rules Committee discuss this further. That would be myself as the chairman and Commissioner Woodruff. We did have a discussion. I would ask Commissioner Woodruff if you would care to weigh in on that a little bit, please.
Yes, sir. We did discuss this item, and it's been discussed in this room a number of times. And I personally believe that with as much as the county has invested in this entire project, the Green Barre Building and all of the accessory moving parts, that two individuals would be a good idea to have serving in that capacity, one being Commissioner Brunson, since he has been very active in a very positive way in moving all of these projects forward. And thank you for that, sir. But then also, maybe that second person would be the chairman of this board or his or her designate if that individual is unable to attend a particular meeting. So, that way, we would have at least one, maybe two avenues of information transferred to this board.
So we can continue further discussion. We've set out what we were asked to do. I'd entertain a motion for continuing discussion on this item.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we appoint a committee for the Nebraska International Port of the Plains.
Second. Discussion, please continue.
So we're wanting a committee that is a working committee and not two liaisons that serve as a conduit of information back and forth between the body and this board?
I think you can call it whatever you want to. As you pointed out so clearly last week, the committee would be liaisons because we don't have any authority to do anything else. You said that yourself, I believe. You said that was called out very, very clearly in the passage of that. So if that was called out so clearly, I think that all we could be was liaisons.
Okay. I just want to, I'm trying to get the scope of what this sub-body, sub-entity is responsible for doing.
I think, in my opinion, and I think in the other committees member, we would be attending the meetings, one or both of us, to merely, if they had a question about where the board was at, or something that happened in a open board meeting, we could certainly comment on what we had in the past. If they had questions or was an ask of the board, we would say that we can't really comment on that, but would be glad to take it back to the full board for discussion at our next meeting. That would be, that's how I see that rule.
And I feel like we have several committees. I know for me personally, being on the Weeds Committee, I don't have a vote in their discussions and decisions. I primarily just bring information from this board to them and from them back to this board. I do attend all the meetings, and that was always my perception. It was never that we would have a say or a vote in the decisions that they were making. But I agree exactly with what Commissioner Woodruff said. This is a big investment. We do need to be present and participate, and I think it's, Chris, from the few meetings I've attended, you have a lot of input, and they take your recommendations and considerations very seriously. And I feel like that is our commitment to our constituents when we decided to make this investment. So I feel like two members, if you can't be there, or if there is a closed session, I feel like us having two people there is vital.
And I might clarify, it would not, it's not me. It would be, the second position would be the board chair, whoever that is, because that's going to change.
And as we discussed, the reason that that is important is because there's a lot of activity, conversation between that board and their activities and us, and the chairman should be integral in that exchange of information and discussion.
Particularly where the chairman is the one that receives their recommendations for the appointments to their board. I feel like that's important. And I do feel like it's important for all of us to get to know that board and have a good relationship with them, so.
So, Mr. Chairman, did I make a motion?
You did.
Okay.
I'm leaving. We even have a second. Let's see if there's any further discussion that we might have. If not, I'll call the question, please. Roll call vote, Tammy.
Wulwer?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Weems?
No.
Brunson?
Aye.
Hugh Wayne?
Aye.
Good morning, Kenny. I have to do this. Haven't seen you guys in a long time. Welcome.
Thank you.
Is that the end of the?
That is the end of the claims. Susan, was the whole neighborhood without electricity or just over?
It's a four. This is all I know.
Hmm. Yeah. The thunder and. Thunder and lightning this morning was really close, so maybe it hit a transformer over there. We had lights on our road.
Did you?
Yeah.
All I know is there wasn't any at six o'clock.
Yeah. I'm glad there wasn't my house at six o'clock.
It's 9:20. The next item is a discussion concerning West Central District Health Department. I'd asked to have this put on, and I'm going to, in a second, ask for maybe a little report from you, Chris, as being our member on there. At the meeting held last week regarding the building that the city has asked to have removed off of city property, it's my understanding, and Tyler, you might weigh in, that the determination was that it's the intent of the state to, in fact, have that building become the property of the West Central Development District. Is that your understanding as well?
No, not the development district.
Or I mean, the West Central Health District, yes.
The Health District, yes.
Okay. I'm sorry for misspeaking. Thank you. Okay. So, I guess I would have a comment and an ask. My comment would be this, that that is, board consists of, I think, 18 different county members. I believe that's the number.
Twelve.
Pardon me?
There's 12 on that board of health.
Oh, so not all of the 18 in our district are on the Board of Health. Okay. So 12 counties.
We don't, they don't serve 12 counties.
Okay. Go ahead and update me on where we're at, and that way I'll understand.
I'm not, really, I'm not understanding what I'm supposed to report on.
Oh, no, no.
Because there was no communication to me.
No, there hasn't been. So here's where I'm going. Is that Board of Directors made up of county members?
The Health District serves six counties, and it has, the Board of Health is made up of county commissioners, spirited individuals from particular counties, a dentist, and a doctor.
Okay. And I think that's probably a dictated setup.
It's a state statute.
Okay. And does that group then have management duties over the director or assistant director?
It is a governing board, not necessarily a working board, so we meet on a quarterly basis. We have oversight of the executive director as far as salary.
Employment?
Employment. And we review and receive briefings on the work that they are doing on a quarterly basis. We review the budget. It's a governmental body. They have tax levy authority. They don't use it, but they do adhere to the Open Meetings Act as prescribed by the state legislature.
I guess what brought this to my attention is I found out that the director was not at this meeting in person, but remotely. It's also my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that this individual's been working remotely from Florida for more than a year, maybe a couple of years or more, and her daughter, also an employee, works remotely, neither of which are full-time in this office right here, but work remotely in the administrative end. Is that correct?
So the executive director works on a part-time basis remotely. They split their time. That was reviewed and approved unanimously by the Board of Health.
And do you know?
I'm not, I don't, I can't speak to all the employees of that agency because we don't get into the inner workings of the staffing, the hiring, and firing.
Okay. So that her daughter might be doing it, it would be under her, not under the board?
Correct.
Okay. And would And would you do a favor for me, would you check to see how many days, months, a year she's remote versus actually checked into the office, working in the office here? I, I would be curious as to that.
Okay.
The next thing that I would like to bring up is
I'm gonna circle back to that, because I'm, I'm trying to understand the rationale behind it.
The rationale is, I think it's wrong for somebody that we can, we have control of the salary and employment of, to be able to have a job, an executive job. And I don't think the public, the public understands that well, I better, do any, how, where does her salary come from?
Her, the vast majority of the funding for that agency is through grants.
Her salary though, where does that come from?
That specific line item and where it's allocated. I mean, the counties provide some portion of their budget.
Okay, that, that's all I was trying to get at, okay. So I just think that it's important that people realize that that is happening. It's, you know, just no different than we, we are a public body. I, I think that my people, I, I have a responsibility to that. So, I understand that it's, it's an independent board, I appreciate that. But I, but I, I think it's fair to let the public know. We talk around this table all the time about perception and about openness and all of those things. I bet not many people realize that, okay? And so that's what I'm bringing attention, that's what I'm doing it. With your person representative, I would also like to, as I understand, the building that we're talking about using, that we had a need for or used for, is currently filled with furniture that this board gave funds to that Health District. We gave them funds, they went out and, as I understand, purchased all new furniture, new flooring and things like that, took the other furniture, filled up that building that was to be used for COVID purposes, and right now it's being used for furniture storage. And if that's the case, I would like to have that reported back to me, because if that's not the case, somebody gave me some okay, somebody gave me some direct wrong information that said it wasn't looked into.
So, the furniture that is in there, part of the requirements for that pod is for community outreach. And we are supposed to partner with local partners. And in this case, yes, there is furniture in there, but it's from Hope Esperanza. And they are using it as a distribution point for immigrant families that are coming into our community to get them basic needs for their living environment. So that is what it is being used for currently.
Thank you. Then, then I did have the information wrong, and I appreciate you correcting that. So the building's currently being used for Hope Esperanza?
Hope Esperanza is utilizing it as a distribution point for supplies and some furniture items, yes.
Okay, all right. I will report back to this person, they were incorrect, and that it's being used for that. My, my ask was going to be, is if they did not have a use for that, a use right now, if they would consider letting the county, in, in light of our funding, helping fund them, being a part of that, use that building until they had a use for, for example, COVID. I was under, I understood that that was the use for that. So if there's another outbreak, call it Smith rather than COVID, that would, they say, okay, we need this building back for that now, bang, it goes back to them. If it wants to be on county property, it could be on county property. I was just trying to get the best use out of the building. And since we helped fund them, I thought it might be a logical ask. And I was going to ask you as a representative if you could have that dialogue, so.
I'll have that.
And I haven't talked to you ahead of time, so this is all totally new to you.
It's, it's, yeah, this is new to me, coming out on the agenda.
Well, I, I usually don't call people ahead of time and talk to them about agenda items, some people do, I don't.
Okay.
In openness.
I will, I will bring this to the Board of Health for further discussion. I will find out the information that you are asking, but I will point out that the Board of Health, the twelve-member Board of Health has reviewed, we've had numerous discussions on the arrangements of our executive director that is doing great things for the community, the sixth county district that she serves. Most of the work that she does is remote anyway, attending meetings with the state and federal level agencies. This last week, she took leadership team out to Chicago for a national conference. She is in the community on a regular basis. She is, the, the perception that she is working remotely 100% of the time from Florida is wrong. And I want that clarified for the record. And I'm, I'm not gonna get into much further dialogue on her work arrangements, because it's, I don't think it's appropriate to have that conversation in a public meeting without her being here.
Very good.
So.
All right.
So the next
Questions?
So, it's my impression that my asking about the pod from the transfer of the University of Nebraska to us may have spurred all of this conversation. And so just to recap, the city reached out to me late last winter, early spring, to have the pods, the double garage pods, removed from city property. The pods, and, and I was not a commissioner when all of that transpired. So I relied on information from Brandon Myers and from Commissioner Woodruff, who was building and grounds, and from Joe, that the pods, that set of pods was sent to Lincoln County and received by Brandon Meyer. And so I operated under an assumption that, that they were the counties. And, but for me, I'm a go-to-the-source, get everybody in one room, let's have a good conversation. And so that meeting did happen late spring. Jerry and Tyler, I think Jason, were you at the meeting that day too? And it, and it was a good meeting, lots of conversations happened. There was, a majority of the people from the city and the county did believe that the pods belonged to the county. Shannon did offer up information that she could provide us with documentation, that it was the intent that the pods be transferred to West Central. I have not seen that document, she said she would share it with us, maybe Tyler received it. But moving forward, it's my understanding that Hope Esperanza has been using the pods. They now have a storefront location that they are prepping and moving in. So it's my hope, where our Sheriff's Department has a need and a, and an everyday use for that unit that has the two drive-through garages attached to it, maybe we can accept the walk-through pod and transfer that to West Central and then transfer the, the garage pods to our Sheriff's Department. So that, that's the conversation, Chris, I was gonna have with you, so I guess no time like the present. So hopefully, we can come together and work something out there.
So I think the, there was a motion to table this on the pod thing till next week. If you would at least approach whomever you might need to, to pass that information along. I appreciate it, if we can have an answer back by next week, that'd be great, if we may not be able to.
I'll do my best.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay. 10:30, discuss, consider designating a raised planning grant project liaison for Lincoln County. I'm gonna ask Commissioner Brunz to lead off on this, he's probably more familiar with that project and that particular grant than, than certainly I am, and Commissioner Brunz?
Yeah, so some of the language that I wanted to be on the agenda was also to provide just an update on where we are. As the board may remember, we had an ad hoc committee that has worked on the application. We submitted an application, really three, four months ago, fairly recently. And we did that because there is a lot of, there's a lot of really exciting things happening in Lincoln County from the standpoint of economic growth and large-scale projects. We have sustainable beef, we have things going on out at the Twin Rivers Business Park, the newly formed, really budding inland port district and the authority that's working to get that off the ground. There's a lot of really exciting things happening on that front, right underneath of the surface. All those dominos over the past couple of years have, have been lined up. And we're getting ready to knock the first domino over here in relatively near future, at least they are, that body. And so, as, kind of looking at the long-term vision of everything that, that's transpiring there, there was a, a question on whether the infrastructure needs for Lincoln County, whether our current infrastructure is adequate. When you take a look at just the inland port alone, some of the things that are budding and likely going to happen in relatively short order. In a matter of a few years, we could see hundreds of trucks traversing our infrastructure. And so, I beg the question, is what we have currently adequate? Possibly it is, we don't, not quite sure. Is there a need for additional infrastructure? And the purpose of the grant that we sought, the raised planning grant, was to seek professional consulting assistance to study what we have currently, to take a look at the horizon of everything that's going on in Lincoln County, and to provide this board some recommendations on different directions, not just one direction, but different directions that we may take to address potential infrastructure needs. And so, I'm very excited, we got word last week that we did receive an extraordinary, it, this is, this is truly extraordinary, and I want the board to fully understand that. We received $750,000 on a first application, something that's virtually unheard of. There were thousands of applications for this very competitive grant. Only roughly 130-ish, I believe, were awarded, and only 38 of those were for rural community planning.
And only two for Nebraska?
And only two in the state of Nebraska. Historically, Nebraska ranks 47th in receiving federal funds. So for us to get this on the first try with an investment of $9,000 from this board for the management fees for West Central District, West Central Nebraska Development District, this is monumental, this is a good return on investment for, for the county. And the funds that we're gonna receive, the $750,000, they're gonna be utilized to conduct extensive planning activities that include hiring professional consultants, conducting feasibility and engineering studies, all the environmental work for the different proposals that they would put out for us, cost benefit, cost benefit analysis, and a large chunk of it going to significant community engagement throughout the entire process. I want public input, I want the, the people of Lincoln County to have a say in what our infrastructure looks like. We don't know what we don't know, and that's why we're hiring the consultant. But the consultant, I want to work hand-in-hand with the public, the people that are gonna utilize this infrastructure to come up with the best possible options for us to consider moving forward. I would also point out that none of this funding goes toward implementation. This is merely a planning grant. As it stands right now, Lincoln County can't afford to put in any kind of a, a major infrastructure project. So, this would, this funding would be utilized to put together a good plan that we could then, in turn, go back and apply for implementation funding. So it's a lengthy process, we're looking at a three-year, three-year horizon potentially, based off of our preliminary studies and what we supplied in the application for this funding. But I, I do wanna take just a quick second to provide sincere gratitude to some individuals. I wanna make sure that this board recognizes and appreciates the work that West Central Nebraska Development District, and in particular Amber Cuskey, and former employee Samantha Redfern have done to get this application put together and put forward and for it to be successful. I'd also like to thank other large contributors, contributors to the application. Judy Clark, our, our county planning and zoning administrator. Jason Schultz, our highway superintendent. Various members of the community at large that participated in a few of the initial discussions regarding current and potential needs and infrastructure problems. I'd like to extend gratitude to our Nebraska congressional delegation that provided letters of support in our application. Vicky Kramer, the Director of NDOT, who sent a letter of support for our application. Mayor Kelleher and City Administrator Lane Grosseth. The Hershey Village Board of Trustees, who enthusiastically backed this application and the overall project. Vince Duke and the Chair of the Nebraska International Port of the Plains. Lisa Burke of Visit North Platte and Gary Pearson, the North Platte Area Chamber of Development Corporation. I, I want to provide just a synopsis before we get into next, next steps, if that's okay, Mr. Chairman.
All I wanna do is, did we have a motion to get this on the table for discussion? That's what I would like to do, because it is a discuss, consider, the first item was 11. Discuss, discuss, consider designing a raised planning grant project liaison for Lincoln County.
In order for that liaison, we have to know exactly who that liaison needs to be.
That's my point.
And that's why I wanna get this
Let's get that on after the motion. Let's do it like we've agreed we would do in the past, let's have a motion and a second. No different, and as a board chair, I'm gonna insist we do that.
Okay, so
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we consider designating raised planning grant project liaison for Lincoln County.
Second.
Now, hold on, I understand your gonna, question is gonna be, as to who that is, that's gonna be
That's
So my, my point is this, Chris, let me just finish a little bit. This, this board sometimes gets very divided, okay? In the way we do things, sometimes people start to discuss without their, without a motion, and somebody else goes, we can't do that, we don't have a motion, I'm not gonna do that anymore. We're gonna be the same for everybody, okay? So we can ask for a clarification on the motion, but we're gonna get a motion and a second. We're gonna discuss the first item on there, and we're gonna go down the agenda. That's how we're gonna do it. Now, if we want a clarification, you can ask for a clarification. That's how it's gonna be done.
So we have a motion and a second, clarifying who do you want to be the liaison?
I have a question about that. So is it just one person, or again, would that be appropriate?
My understanding would be one person.
One person.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to amend my motion, and I would like to consider designating Commissioner Brunz as being the raised planning grant project liaison for Lincoln County.
Very good, I would be
Second.
Thank you.
I seconded the first one, I will amend my second.
Thank you, so we have a motion and a second, Christopher Brunz, that Commissioner Brunz be the project planning grant liaison for Lincoln County. So before we go on and discuss the other US DOT federal highway things, Commissioner Brunz, please go ahead.
So, which is why it was important for the language that I supplied to be included in the agenda, because I wanted to provide an update on everything.
No, I understand, but I also wanna say, as chairman, we're not gonna have any more fighting back and forth about the motion and the second. It's gonna be the same for everybody, and it is on this one. Please go ahead, Commissioner Brunz.
So, next steps, I'm just gonna get to the, not, not the shell. Next steps for receiving this grant is, I had, I had some conversations with NDOT and the US DOT Federal Highway Administration this past week, once we got notice. The planning grants are pretty straightforward. In that communication, they relayed that we needed very specific things to happen in relatively short order. The first is that we needed to appoint a liaison. This, this liaison is going to be the central point of communication with external agencies with regard to this grant and the project. They can then disseminate out and bring They can then disseminate out and bring in other people into the conversation as is deemed necessary. But having that individual identified is going to be pertinent for the grant agreement that the USDOT is going to be putting together. The second item, which I'm going to give an update now that we have some discussion, even though it's for the second bullet point, they also state that we need to have, we need to identify as a board whether or not we want to partner with the state Department of Transportation to manage this application, or if Lincoln County wants to go it alone. It was relayed to me that we can't hire a third party to administer these funds. That's a requirement from USDOT, that it's the state administering it in partnership with us, or it's the county. And I want to highlight what that means, real quick. It's my recommendation that we partner with NDOT to manage the grant administration. A grant agreement will be coming from USDOT, once we determine how we want the partnership to go, but that agreement typically takes four to six months to be finalized. If we go it alone, we can't move forward with anything regarding the RFQ, we can't incur any costs prior to the grant agreement being finalized and actuated by all parties. So at least four to six months on typical timeframe. If we partner with NDOT, NDOT will put together what's called a DR 530 programming document, which allows them to enter our agreement, our grant into their system, and then get the appropriate people assigned within their department to initiate a program agreement with Lincoln County that lays out all the requirements for NDOT to us, and what our part is in the actual grant management portion, okay? That is a fairly quick turnaround, I mean, we're talking just a matter of a couple of days. Once we review, consider, and activate that agreement with NDOT, should we go that route, we can obligate funds as advanced construction and planning with NDOT, and start the state's procurement and RFQ process as early as mid-July to begin work of securing consultant. The RFQ process takes typically four to six weeks from start to finish, typically. The state will literally help with all aspects of the grant if we partner with them, they will advertise the RFQ, they will work with us on the scope of services that we want to see, they'll determine the deliverables with us. We would be responsible for reviewing the RFQ respondents and narrowing it down via a committee, or as a full board, whatever this board decides, a shortlist for partnered review with NDOT and us to select the final actual consultant. But we would have that committee do the shortlisting. Again, we ultimately, Lincoln County picks the final consultant, NDOT leaves that to us. Concurrently with the RFQ process, NDOT is working with USDOT on getting the grant agreement signed. So, all that work is done through obligating those funds as advanced planning. NDOT will put together the scope of services and hours for the consultant and get that agreement with the consultant signed, they'll handle all the billing and payment of the consultant, and all, making sure all the deliverables are met and meeting defined benchmarks per the agreement. Lincoln County would incur no expenses, there's no administrative cost for NDOT doing that work for us. The state will handle all the financial aspects of the grant, which includes the federal funds. The federal funds would go to NDOT, Lincoln County, they would house it, and they would administer it. And they will also take care of all the financial reporting to the feds, which is big. So we wouldn't have to set up a sub-account, we wouldn't have to do the reporting aspect, we would provide them information for their reporting, but they take on the massive burden of administering this program with the federal government. And then, again, I want to stress that the NDOT does not charge any administrative fees. The liaison, which is what this item is, will work in all aspects of the project as a central point of communication. They'll facilitate local aspects with relevant county departments in the community, and they are needed to be designated on the NDOT program agreement. So it's important that this board determines who that is.
I would like to make a comment, thank you. I was speaking with the county clerk as I was out of town last week. Did you speak to The Telegraph regarding this?
I received a call from The Telegraph asking for my thoughts on the award.
When did you receive that, and how did The Telegraph find out about it, do you know?
It was put out in a press release from, no, the US Department of Transportation.
USDOT, USDOT, okay, good. I didn't know if that came from Nebraska DOT or the US, it came from the US DOT.
USDOT.
Got you. I just need to comment, let's see if this is the right place to do it. I'll bring up my comment at a later point.
Can I ask you a question?
Please do.
The, if we didn't choose to go with NDOT, which makes a lot of sense, you say there's no charge from them to the county, do they take a share of the grant?
No.
That's all I need to know.
The first thing I'd like to do is, at this point, I think it's, go ahead, I mean, we need to have further discussion, I think it's important that, should we act on the item that's currently before us, and that has to have Commissioner Brunz as the liaison on, isn't that, is this an appropriate time, I think, to go ahead?
I agree.
Act on that. So, any further discussion on that particular item? Roll call, vote, Tammy.
Wimmer?
Aye.
Wimmer?
Aye.
Brunz?
Aye.
Wiems?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, okay. Next item, discuss, consider providing notice to the US Federal Highway Office as to whether Lincoln County would like to partner with the NDOT Planning Grant Management, or if Lincoln County would like to go with a process of their own. I'd like to entertain a motion that, we make the motion whatever you want.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that Lincoln County partner with Nebraska Department of Transportation for the RAISE Planning Grant Management for Lincoln County.
Second.
Second discussion, I think you started a good part of it, anything else you want to continue on, Commissioner Brunz or anybody else?
I just wanted to get that update out there, that we can make motions and decisions appropriately.
I don't necessarily have a question, but I would like to say congratulations. This, I almost didn't mean to answer my phone that morning when Sam and Amber called me. As a member of their board also, I know how much work that they, that became Samantha's entire focus for weeks on end. And I know that Commissioner Brunz contributed greatly to providing her with all of the data and the statistics, the boring stuff that people have to be willing to dig into to make these applications successful. I sat in a meeting last year with the people from Beatrice, who also applied for the grant, and this was their second time around. And they too, they were the other Nebraska entity that got it. So, this is a great thing for us, to have this money, there's a lot of opinions about accepting grants and federal money, but somebody was going to get this money, and it's the only way, I felt, we were going to get a feasibility and all the other elements that come along with this done for Lincoln County. We certainly could not afford to fund this on our own.
I will, as a segue of that comment, I will point out that these grants typically have a fairly large local match.
Yes, thank you for bringing that up.
We requested and we were awarded 0% local match, this is 100% funded by the federal government.
So, again, thank you for your work on this, Commissioner Brunz. I think it's a great place for us to start this conversation.
Any other comments or questions regarding us partnering with the Nebraska Department of Transportation to manage this grant?
I guess I thought that was the intent all along, so I was surprised that that had to be, but I understand why now. So, I do think it's a great idea to partner with Nebraska, we don't have the resources or the capability to manage this locally.
We would be foolish not to, I think.
Yes, I agree.
Any other comments or discussion? Tammy, roll call, vote.
Wimmer?
Aye.
Wiems?
Aye.
Wimmer?
Aye.
Brunz?
Aye.
Wiems?
Aye.
Next item I put on is to discuss, consider appointing an ad hoc committee to work with the implementation of the RAISE grant and other items as may arise. We've sort of discussed this in the past, but this committee's sole purpose would be to work in the implementation of this grant to be a go-between between this board and the federal and state people, not discounting the liaison that we would have that would be the point person. My, no, I won't say what my thinking is. I think it would, for continuity, I think, you know, what are you saying, I wasn't going to say that, I said. So that's where we're at, I think that we should have an ad hoc committee appointed, that would be one that would be appointed by the chairman, and...
May I take a stab at this, Chairman?
Oh, please do.
I would move that we reaffirm the already-existing ad hoc committee.
Thank you.
That consists of myself, yourself, our highway superintendent, our county planning and zoning administrator, and Gary Pearson, the president and CEO of the North Platte Area Chamber of Development Corporation. Second.
Discussion, I have no problem with that. Can we in fact, we can request Mr. Pearson be on there, I don't think that we can make an appoint him, but we can request his membership on there, is that what you're saying? I think that maybe we might be able to appoint a county employee, I would think.
I'm just reaffirming the committee that's already standing.
Well, but, but that committee, I'm not sure is the ad hoc committee we're talking about. That doesn't mean that the committee, to me, an ad hoc committee is a committee of this board, that's what an ad hoc committee is, because that's what, I don't have authority to appoint people out of this board. Now, if we were to choose to, and it says with the implementation of the RAISE grant and other items as they may arise, that doesn't, I don't think that precludes us to coming back to the board and say, "Would you mind if we include some other people on a committee?" The only reason, one reason I say that, Commissioner Brunz, is I read, and I know there's people here in the audience, and I want to address that, how some of maybe this misperception came about as to what's happening. I look at the headlines, "County receives $750,000, federal funding will pay for a study of a four-lane loop around North Platte." I don't know that that's what the heck that's doing, is paying for a study of a four-way loop around North Platte, but I know there's a lot of people out there that think that, because I've had my phone ringing off with people that are concerned, by God, when did you decide we were going to have a four-lane loop around North Platte? I went on to look at a map that's included as part of, I think, the application that is very specific on the lines that it draws, where it draws them from the previous...
Which map?
Let's see if it's in this one or if it was in a previous one. It would have been in a previous, you know, it showed...
Online, that showed the areas of study, or any potential...
It could have been, it was a square.
That came right out of the application.
That's my point. So, shame on me for having it come right out of the application, and hopefully, that doesn't have to come, I hope that we don't bind ourselves by that, because a unappointed committee drew those lines.
No, this board reviewed that application.
After it was submitted, we were able to review the application, we never saw, I never saw it before it was submitted.
I thought Samantha had submitted the application.
I don't think so.
Prior to application.
Not before we voted to...
So that's my concern, I don't want to limit this board, because we've been very clear, yourself included, I know, Commissioner Wiems, that nothing is said and dry, they can look at everything, so for us to be just studying a four-lane loop around here, I don't think is right. I don't think it's right at all.
The four-lane loop came from early discussion in this body of potential what we may...
The four-lane loop came from a meeting outside of here, Chris, because this four-lane, okay, I'm sorry, I apologize, go ahead.
It came from describing a conversation as a potential option, we don't know what that looks like. I can't control what the press takes and runs with as far as, but they got it from discussion that happened in this meeting. That's the only place they could have gotten it.
So, is it...
I believe, if I can contribute, I believe that after the meeting that was held at the college with about 23 or 25 entities from the community, there was an article with very specifics describing that meeting, published in the local media. And that's where the first phone calls from my constituents come from, was from that meeting there. And we, we had not...
That meeting was not reported, there was no media there?
Yes, there was, Chris, I have a copy of it, that I saved digitally.
There was no media at that stakeholder's?
No, but they published an article after that meeting. They did.
Yes, please, Judy, because you were, you've been involved since the get-go.
So, Judy Clark, I'm the planning administrator for the city of North Platte and for Lincoln County. Yep, no problem.
Excuse me, we'll, I'll take care of it, I'm pretty good at that myself, thank you.
So I just want to say something, so when you're looking at a planning grant, when you apply, they very much want to have some starting point. So, what had happened was, you know, I don't know how all the meetings occurred, the media gets information, it's hard to say. Once you get something, you guys, myself, anybody that's a county employee or a city employee, once you have something on your desk, the media can come in and get it whenever they want to, it's freedom of information, okay? Once you have that, they can get it. So what the media did with it, we can't control the media. What the whole entire point of a RAISE grant is, and what planning in general is, is to look at options to the future. You have to have a starting point. Now that map was just a starting point, it got us the grant, I don't believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, I don't believe there is anything specific in that grant application that is going to hold us to the map that's there.
That is correct.
Because this is a feasibility study, that map may be completely and entirely off-base. I mean, we were just looking at different options, different thoughts, we may be completely, when this feasibility study comes back, we may have went, "Oh, well that initial thing was just stupid," and throw it in the trash. Because it's going to be what, that's why you hire professionals to do this, people that are very, very, very well-versed in transportation, you know, I'm decent at transportation, Jason's pretty darn good at transportation, but these people have, I don't know, ideas that I probably couldn't even dream of, of what would be the best scenario, where it would be, where would be the best place, and that's the whole point of this feasibility study. Everything in that application, we may have been totally wrong with, and they're going to come back and say, "Look, this is where you should go, this is where your focus should be, and this is going to be the most impactful and the cheapest way to go."
My question, the concerns that have been brought to me from people based off of the application itself, there were very specific descriptions of extending, widening, dividing, very specific, like it named roads.
Yep.
And so you're saying that the federal government will not hold us to doing that... And so, you're saying that the federal government will not hold us to doing that specific work if the feasibility study comes back and says, that's not feasible, we recommend doing this, this, and this?
I will never step out and venture to say what the federal government will do, but with any, with...
So, you see the concern though?
Yes, yes.
From the people, is there was very descriptive...
But that is the entire point of a feasibility study, because what we put in, or I shouldn't even say we, what they put in that application was based off of, you know, just our thoughts on where might be the best location. And we could be completely and totally off-base. There may never, you know, the, but you have to give your consultants a starting point, because if you just say, hey, do a feasibility study, where do they even start? You have to give them a starting point.
So, Judy, when we meet with our consultants, and hopefully an ad hoc committee from this board meets with the consultants, and the consultants will also at some time be meeting with this full board, maybe even during the interview process, we can say to them, this, we needed to do something to get a grant.
Yep.
We know we need some infrastructure, here's the general parameters, go look and see what happens. That would be the understanding, correct?
That would be exactly what we would do.
That's actually what is in the application. The only specified roads in the application that are mentioned by name is North Buffalo as a potential evacuation route, and Newberry, which was already in the planning stages of...
And West State Farm is mentioned by name in there, extending it is mentioned. I was given a highlighted copy of the application.
I'll have to go back and review that.
So, I mean, that's where a lot of the concern is coming from, is I don't feel, because of the articles in the paper, which were very specific, and conversations that get expanded upon, there's a lot of concern, and genuine concern, in the community that we haven't exactly approached this in a very transparent and open manner. We can start that right here and now. I think in our last meeting, we all made a commitment to the community that there would be community engagement opportunities.
We made that commitment from the get-go.
And you can definitely build that into your RFQ too. You can require your consultants, as many meetings as you want to, for the general public. The other thing, I don't think this could have happened at a better time, because we're going through our comprehensive planning update that's going to, that's going to have a section of a chapter on transportation, and that should be almost complete and adopted by this board before the consultant even gets started with this, at least from the timeframe that's listed. Federal grants do take a long time to get through the process of getting your grant contract, getting all of that put together before you can even go out and get a consultant. So, they're already going to have some idea of what our consultants think as far as transportation goes, where, you know, they're going to use all that data when they come back with a feasibility study for this particular project.
Good, I was going to say, because there's a lot, you know, there, thank you.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, I'm glad, I'm glad you had a lot of clarity. Thank you, Judy, very much for that. So, the way it's worded on here, a discuss and consider usually indicates an action by the board. And we have a motion of that effect right now by Commissioner Brunns, we'll take a second, don't we? Right? We have a second then, okay?
We have a second.
So, my only ask would be this, is that, I have no, I welcome that opportunity, okay? I think that's logical on the two board members. What I would ask is that we, if we want to have Jason involved, which he has to be, period, that that either be listed as a member, outside of that, I don't think that we should. I think that we can have some discussion about, does this ad hoc committee have the ability from this board to request other individuals, such as, you know, members from Development Corporation?
My original language for the agenda item was to discuss individuals that can work to shortlist potential RFQ respondents.
And it was, and I changed that, at my prerogative, because I thought, because I, because I thought it was a larger item than just talking about the RFQ. I thought we needed to talk about the RACE grant in general, and the other items as may arise might be an RFQ, but it's, the RACE grant, I think the implementation of that, it's important that we have this board well-represented in an ad hoc committee.
In the effort of trying to move things along, how about we, I amend my motion, instead of reaffirming the existing ad hoc committee, which has done the work thus far, that we amend that committee to include yourself, Mr. Chairman, myself, our county planning and zoning administrator, and our county highway superintendent, period. Second.
The motion is second amended. Thank you, I think that makes a lot of sense, and that doesn't mean that that's, that we don't have discussions with other people that are critically involved in with this as well.
I have a question. So, the ad hoc committee that is going to work with NDOT and the federal entity on the feasibility study application, once that's completed, will there be another committee appointed for implementation? Will there be a stakeholder group like the one that was assembled?
No, I don't think that there's a...
I think that's what this item is now, on the implementation, isn't it?
This is the implementation of the RACE grants.
This is, yeah, for the RACE grant.
We're limiting it to just that. The original committee was just for a potential infrastructure project, and it limited them to one phase of what that project may be. Which if we want to do this, that's the motion that's on the table, is to limit this, and then if we go to implementation, at that point, we would appoint another ad hoc committee.
Further discussion? So, as I understand, the motion is Commissioner Brunns, the chairman, the highway superintendent, Jason Schultz, and Lincoln County planner, administrator Judy Clark, correct, to serve on that ad hoc committee?
That is, that was my motion.
Okay. Further discussion? Rule call vote, Tammy.
Brunns.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hugues.
Aye, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Brunns. Any you need for a closed session? Here for elected officials department, oh. Before we do that, I had a note put in front of me, we have some guests in the audience, would you clear to mention who you are and welcome? Oh, yeah, let's see, hold on. I'll tell you what, I will, because we have not stopped it in the past, I would welcome just a comment, maybe or two, but we're not going, this isn't a time to hear from the public necessarily. I was just going to hear from our guest, recognize you, but please go ahead and have the mic, just to identify yourself and sign in, please, sir.
Kenny on the hands. I just hope this proposal doesn't go any further than what it has. We don't know who's behind it, we know he is, who other influential people are behind it, but as long as it's not pushed to these people that's going to do this survey or whatever it is, if it doesn't mean nothing, then it shouldn't go before the government on any, anything, because we don't know where that'll go. So, it either dies, and it's gone, and it's not on any, it's not pushed.
It's, it's not going to...
I don't trust it, because he's, he's behind it.
I will not have you attacking anybody up here, we're not, okay, let me make a comment. It's not going to die, it is going to go on. We received the study implementation for $750,000, we're going to accept that. And we are going to have a professional at some time hired to do a complete study, not necessarily something that originally came out, but that's what we've been talking about, and that will happen, that's a fact.
As long as it's not pushed, because it's the only proposal out there.
Well, trust me, there'll be many proposals out there, and there'll be plenty of public meetings that you can address it on at that time also.
And I, Kenny, I would like to think that the professionals that we retain to do this work, they, they will show up for the town hall meetings or whatever meetings that are assembled, and they will listen to everybody's input. We will have ideas and suggestions, the community will have ideas and suggestions. I would like to think that they would take everything into consideration, but it's what they're trained to do, it's their area of expertise, and I feel like we will get good results from this feasibility study. They have to look at things that none of us are even aware of, as far as environmental and, and all of the impacts. And so, this is, this is a good place for us to start.
That's fine, as long as I was promised transparency, the first time I come in here, from everybody fell out of their seat telling me, well, it's going to be transparent.
And we will be, we are committed to that.
Well, you be damn sure this ain't pushed.
Don't tell her to make sure, tell me, because I'm going to be on the, I'm going to be on the committee, so you can point your finger at me too, and I can tell you, it's going to be as open as a son of a gun, okay? All right, thank you.
And we will be asking for very frequent report backs, and, and it'll be transparent. We understand the impact and the concern, especially from the ag community, we do.
Anyone else?
I'm Jeff Lebsok.
Just come on up, please, thank you.
You're welcome.
Sorry, I better do it right.
Yes, I wanted to apologize to Judy, but she left before I could, for, I just wanted to be sure I know who's going on, what's going on in...
And your name again, please.
Jeff Lebsok.
Okay.
I'm Kenny's next-door neighbor. The Loop wants to put the four-lane highway right down by driveway, and it's going to get, I'm sorry, sir, go ahead.
There is no definitive route, no plan on any, we don't even know if we need a four-lane loop around the city of North Platte.
I got that from you.
I'm making that very clear, and I want the press to report that, that we have no definitive route. What was reported early on in papers was coming back and summarizing what the stakeholders identified as potential issues with our transportation, and what potential solutions may be, and that, yes, we have a need to seek professional consultants to assist us.
Okay.
That's where that entire narrative came out that was in the press.
Okay.
And Jeff, just to clarify, I had conversation after that very first article came out, and some of the information in that article was from meetings that were 10 years old. So, so this isn't a new conversation in our county.
Okay.
But, but I do understand why people have the perception that there is a definitive route, there is a map, people have done records requests and have it, so we get where you're coming from.
Okay.
It's our commitment as a group that, come to our meetings, participate in this, everything will be considered, and...
Jeff, it's sort of like, I am from the government and I'm here to help you. Believe it or not, for once, we really are trying to do the right thing, and it will be, it'll be very transparent. There's two, there are two members, myself and Commissioner Brunns, our highway superintendent and the Judy Clark, will be sort of the four behind that driving this. Any recommendations that we do or don't have on either selecting a consultant or anything else, will have to come before this board, and it will be televised, it'll be in an open meeting, and...
And you'll have every right to come in and voice your thoughts.
It's our hope, every time you see this on our agenda, I had that conversation with Kenny yesterday when he approached me about this. Absolutely, come here, participate. This, this is how the process is going to work.
Okay, great, that's, I want to, I embrace the transparency, and you, Mrs. Wheeler, Michaela, to just communicate with Pam and I and Kenny and everybody, so we can come here, and the one question is, the meetings, once, are every Monday?
We meet every Monday, but I can't tell you when this may be on, might be on once a month, twice a month, once every two...
The media does a great job on, I believe, is it Saturdays, Caitlin? You guys recap what's going to be on our agenda.
Okay.
And Kenny and I see each other frequently. I will make a commitment, anytime we are having a discussion about this, somebody from our neighborhood will know. You will have an opportunity to be here, listen firsthand, and if you can't, we have a YouTube channel, which makes it very easy to hear exactly what's happening in this room.
Except for dummies like me that can't get all the letters on the YouTube, so I've never watched it, but go ahead.
Yes, I appreciate it.
Very easy.
Very easy, I'll share the link with you again.
All right, thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you, guys, and yes, thanks, Michaela, thank you.
You're welcome, Jeff, Pam, thanks for coming in.
Anyone else like to make a comment? Speak now or forever, hold your peace, okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Yes, sir.
Okay, now, here are concerns from elected officials department, ads where the representatives. Anyone wish to give a committee report?